Okay, I guess we could get started here. Beginning with item one, call to order. I called the January 11th, 2022 Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Begin with item 1A, roll call. Commissioner Christensen?
Present.
Commissioner Gay? You might be muted. Commissioner Gay, oh, there you go. Are you present, Commissioner Gay? Be able to hear us, Commissioner Gay? If so, could you please indicate your presence?
Commissioners, I will contact Commissioner Gay over text or phone and try and get this issue resolved. Otherwise, he is present for the sake of the record.
Thank you, Director Justice. Commissioner CB, present. Commissioner Michelson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith? Appear to be present and Commissioner Barrow?
Yes, sorry, Commissioner CB, I am present. I just have a little technical difficulty there for a minute.
No problem. Hello, Commissioner Smith. No, you are present. And Commissioner Barrow?
Present.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present for the meeting. Item 1B is approval of the agenda. Director Justice, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All second.
Okay, Commissioner Barrow has moved to approve the agenda and Commissioner Smith has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner CB, aye. Commissioner Michelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Barrow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Item two is the public comment period. Residents may address the Planning and Zoning Commission to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Audience members will be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items as they come up. Speakers must register with village staff prior to the beginning of the meeting and each speaker is limited to three minutes. Kiko, do we have any members from the public signed up to speak?
Yes, we did have somebody signed up, but I don't see them in the participants list. Is there anybody else who did not sign up that would like to speak? I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
All right, thank you, Kiko. With that in mind, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item 3A is approval of the minutes from December 14th, 2021 regular meeting. Are there any corrections or comments from the commissioners? All right, I'm seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda with the minutes as read.
I will second it. Commissioner Christensen has moved to approve the minutes as read and Commissioner CB has seconded the motion. We'll move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Gay?
Aye.
Commissioner CB, aye. Commissioner Michelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item four, public hearings and applications. Item 4A is variance 22-01, a request by Roger and Georgia Eaton for a variance from 9.2.25 E1B1. Bed and breakfast establishments must be operated by the property owner or otherwise authorized resident living on site to allow for off-premises operators for a bed and breakfast in the A1 zone in the North Rio Grande character area. The property is located at 8617 Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest and is legally known as Lot D1A of summary plat lots D1A and D1B Los Fonsanos subdivision, projected section 17, township 11 North, range 3 East, NMPM, town of Alameda Grant, Village of Los Rancho, St. Albuquerque, Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernalillo County Clerk on November 13th, 2017. The property contains 1.4161 acres more or less. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? All right, I'm not seeing any. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Director Tiffany Justice?
Tiffany, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Yes, so commissioners, this applicant desires to operate bed and breakfast at their residence with the operators off premises. They have been operating as off-premises operators prior to the village's adoption of our regulations on short-term rentals that occurred in June of last year. They provided proof of operation since at least 2019. The applicants were in Maine for the summer and they recently came back, so they weren't aware of the October 6th grace period deadline in order to be grandfathered in for off-premises operators and/or more than four guest bedrooms. Those are the only two allowances that we allowed applicants to be grandfathered in. All other parts of the application that bed and breakfast applicant would have to abide by. Staff notified existing operators through information on our website and in our magazine which applicants wouldn't have received if they were out of state and through notice letters. We only sent notice letters to addresses that the company that we contracted with identified as an existing operation that was active. And so since that company didn't identify this property, we didn't send them a specific notice letter for them. The surrounding land uses are all zoned A1 in the North Rio Grande character area. And there's a few criteria that we look at when considering the variance. The first is that regarding section 9.2.25 E7A1, the variance is and is not in conformance with the goals and policy of the master plan. By nature of the request, all variances don't conform with sections of our master plan that say to enforce our zoning regulations. However, the applicant and the application is in conformance with the master plan in the economic development section. In accordance with section 9.2.25 E7A2, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. We established a deadline to apply for bed and breakfast to be grandfathered in to encourage existing operators to obtain a license and to require an on-premises operator in subsequent applications. The new regulations require an on-premises operator in part because general nuisances from guests and events are less likely to occur when someone is on site. However, the applicant did submit their application once they were back in the state and they found out about the bed and breakfast applications and they met the next closest deadline to apply for the soonest meeting. They actually have been in touch with me since November, but due to deadlines and everything, we're hearing it now in January. This application shows prior operation and relatively continuous operation before June of 2021. And they have been operating without complaints for the past couple of years. This history supports continued good operations should they continue to operate off premises and should nuisances occur and are reported, the bed and breakfast permit may be revoked and any reapplication for a bed and breakfast permit would require a new variance to continue off premises. The current operator lives in Corales, so they are nearby to respond to issues should they occur, even though the property owner and applicant is the couple that was in Maine. And so, and the village received one comment in favor of the application prior to publishing the meeting packet. I'll be reading it out loud during the public comment period. The reason why it wasn't included in your packet was simply staff error. Since we put out the packet over the holidays, we hadn't seen this one. And in accordance with section 9.2.25 E7A3, the variance needs hardship criteria number five. The other relevant factors exist that indicate when, indicate that granting of the variance is substantially justifiable. The applicant states that they need hardship criteria number five since it provides them financial support and the ability to keep their home. However, financial gain or loss cannot be deciding factor. That's insufficient reason for the hardship. But the applicant does have other relevant factors that were in their letter that can meet this hardship. Since the applicant didn't know about the grace period, since they were in the state and we could not send them a courtesy notice, this is a pretty unique scenario. And the applicant has operated off premises without incidents, meeting the intent of the on-premises operator. And the economic development section of the master plan does support this application. The application is also in conformance with section 9.2.25 E7C1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. First of this, probably doesn't, this variance doesn't affect the zoning of the property since the use is still residential. Financial gain or loss is not a deciding factor. Variance differs only enough to relieve alleged hardship. Hardship's not self-imposed by the property owner because the grace period was for the duration that they were out of state. So they could not have received the general public service announcements in the local magazine. And as a company we contracted with didn't identify this property, we couldn't send them an individual notice letter. The development of the short-term rental ordinance had been going on for a couple of years without progress. As indicated by the supplemental emails that are included in your packet, they have been on top of and aware of the situation, but no progress had been made for several years. So there was no forewarning to keep an eye out in our, in our meetings and on our website. No prior application for a variance has been submitted on this property in the last six months. And this variance doesn't set precedence as the basis for its approval is meeting hardship number five. There is evidence of prior continuous operation without complaints or incidents. And the variance has a term expiration tied to the bed and breakfast permit that limits its duration. E and B permits are non-transferable by nature, so this variance cannot be passed on past the point of this permit's expiration. And so with that, the department recommends approval of V22-01 for a variance from section 9.2.2. Sorry, this is a clerical error. 25E1B1, bed and breakfast establishments must be operated by the property owner or other, otherwise authorized residents living on site to allow for off-premises operators for bed and breakfast permit in the A1 zone, North Rio Grande character area with the following conditions and findings. The condition that this variance is tied to bed and breakfast permit, BB2122-01 for Roger and Georgia Eaton. Exploration, revocation, or close-up business of BB22-01 shall be cause for expiration of this variance, V22-01. But the findings of the variance meets the requirements of our of section 9.2.25 E7A1, 2, 3, and C1 through 6. And public notice requirements have been met. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. I see a question from Commissioner Christensen.
Director Justice, I was just wondering why they weren't identified by the company that the village employs of not being active.
Right, so Commissioner Christensen, commissioners, the company that we contracted with, they, so they are both an automated service and an in-person service. So they will, their automated component looks through listings on Airbnb, VRBO, and other short-term rental websites to identify listings. And the listings, of course, don't identify the exact address. And so, once, once the listing being within the vicinity of Los Rancho is identified, as well as identified as being active, then they will, and assume that this is in the village of Los Rancho, try to assign it an address according to the Bernalillo County Assessor's Office. And then they also do, in perpetually, they do person, I guess, follow-up to look on Google Street Maps and Street View to make sure that this address that was identified is the one that matches the listings. And so it actually takes quite a bit of time for them to confirm that. And they actually, I actually sent out a few letters to addresses before they had officially been confirmed and got calls back saying, I don't own a bed and breakfast. What are you talking about? So there is a bit of a lag time that wasn't anticipated when we made this grace period that unless an operator kind of knew in advance, we didn't send out that many letters to inform people of the grace period.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from the commission at this point? Yes, Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, Tiffany, so this, this residence was not registered with the village at any time as being a Airbnb or any type of business, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. The applicant can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe they have a different business license for other activities that happen on the property, but not for the bed and breakfast. And this is because we didn't require a short-term rental to register as a bed and breakfast. If it's rented, if it's rented out of the main house, it was always an option, but it was not a requirement to do so.
But if they had have been registered and licensed in Los Rancho's, this third party that we have hired to send out notices would have known that and been able to send them a notice.
Commissioner Gay, commissioners, if this property had already had a bed and breakfast license with the village, we wouldn't be having this conversation because they would have already registered before we made the changes. So they would have already had an approved bed and breakfast license. The grace period to grandfather in existing operations assumed that someone was operating but did not have a bed and breakfast license with the village because we didn't require them to. Since adoption of the new rules, we've required.
The answer is no. Is that correct?
The answer is no. We wouldn't have found them in our database.
Great.
Any further questions from the commission? All right, is the applicant present?
Yes, stand by.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you.
Great. Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
My full name is Roger Von Coloster Eaton. And I live at 8617 Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, Los Rancho's with my wife, Georgia.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Mr. Eaton?
Mr. Eaton, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Eaton, would you like to speak about your application?
Well, I just would like to say that I am very sorry that I missed the deadline. We did leave for May, or in Maine, in May of 2021, and we didn't get back till September 7. And I really didn't become aware of what had happened until earlier mid-November. When I had first heard about the potential for short-term rental regulation was in November of 2020. And actually, I wrote and had communications with Tiffany in, in at least December and January of 2020 to 2021. And that goes up from pages 54 through 58 of the packet. And I had, so I was in the database and I communicated with Tiffany that we did want to participate and make an application if there was something that we could qualify for. And I, so I would have hoped that the company that did the, did the letters to send out to people would have somehow notified, gone through the emails that the, the village had and, and communicated. Because I understand from Tiffany that this material was given to the board when they were first contemplating the short-term rental ordinance. So, I mean, I, I was there and I should have been on someone's radar and I apologize for not picking it up myself. But I, I also would have hoped that someone would have sent me a letter since, since I wasn't getting the vision. We were leaving it with our, our guests and it wasn't forwarded to me by my granddaughter. So I apologize, but you know, I, the materials you have, we've been very successful. Everybody has loved the property. We've gotten good reviews. We wouldn't let any parties or events be there, even though we had asked and we sort of dissuaded people by making it a, a three-day actually stay at the house. We wouldn't do it just overnight. And we were asked on numerous occasions for people who wanted to use our, our backyard for a pool party and a birthday party. And we didn't want that to happen. So the house that we live in is a, is a Nat Kaplan. It was a Nat Kaplan barn before it became Ed King's office. And then Ed King moved into it. It was the third house that he lived on, on this property, which was originally part of the Alameda grant. It's a beautiful structure and everybody has enjoyed it. And we have and will encourage people to use and get to know the village when they stay here. So I'll answer any questions that you may ask.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant at this point? Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, Mr. Eaton, I went to your property today and you did not have the signage posted for the public public meeting of this, of this meeting tonight. There was no, nothing posted on your driveway nor on Rio Grande Boulevard. So can you explain how that happened?
I posted on the front gate, which we, Monzano Lane goes off of Rio Grande right at the top of the bypass. And I posted on the back gate. We have two gates to drive through our property from the, from the road, Los Monzanos. I didn't even think about putting anything up on Rio Grande itself because it's about 200 yards west of Rio Grande on a paved road. And there are three gates. My gate, the gate that Alicia Kits property she controls and the gates to Turner Margaret Branch's old property, which is now owned by Bronson Duran.
But I went there at 2:00 today and there was no, nothing posted on your gate at 87.
I took this, I took the gate posting off this morning. It was, I was, I thought it was only supposed to be there till the 28th of December or something. But I took it off this morning. It's still on the back gate.
Where was his back gate? Is that something that the public can see? I'm not sure.
They get, if they go through the, the, the gate, the Alicia gate, Lisa Kits gate, they, and that's open about half the time.
But there's, there was no, nothing posted the public could have seen today at 2:00.
So Commissioner Gay, commissioners, if I could just interject, there's a couple of things. One, Mr. Eaton, the sign did have a time. Ideally, it would be up until 7:00 PM. One, Mr. Eaton, the sign did have a time. Ideally, it would be up until seven P M. Today, however, Commissioner Gay, the requirement is for it to be posted visible from the roadway. It does not require it to be posted from the nearest public roadway. It is possible to post it on the private roadway. So so long as Mr. Eaton had it posted on. A gate that is adjacent to a roadway, even if it is on a private road, that is considered sufficient public notice. The idea is to notify those in the vicinity of the property, and so it makes sense to put it close to the residence. However, it it should have been posted up until seven P M. today, but that is. Less, less of an issue.
Well, it's it's kind of an issue to, if it wasn't posted. Where the public can see it and it wasn't posted where the public could see it at two o'clock today, then I'm gonna. Just have to imagine that no one saw it. And I don't know these other gates you're referring to, but that's not a private road. That's a driveway. And so if you said you wanted a. A public notice to be posted where the public can see it, you know, that's pretty much on the road. So. I, I, with all due respect, but there was no posting there today at two o'clock. That anybody could have seen that could have got through a gate. Every other gate was locked, so I'm not sure how you. Could imagine these other gates would have qualified as a. A place for a public notice. So, there you go.
All right, well. Are there any further questions at this point for the applicant? All right, well, hearing none, we're gonna move on. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
If you'd like to speak in favor of the application, please use your raise your hand button. There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Kiko. And conversely, is there anybody lined up to speak in opposition to this application? And you may raise your hand if if you're in attendance, you may raise your hand at this point if you need to speak.
Nobody has signed up and there are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Kiko. Are there any further comments from the commission before I close the floor for comments? All right, I'm hearing none, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the floor for comments now. Is there any discussion on the application amongst the commissioners prior to a motion? Yes.
Yeah, Drew, like, for some reason, I keep losing the raise your hand thing, but. I'm really, really concerned about not having this posted. I'm not here to get into an argument about it as much as. As a resident of the village of Los Rancho's, you know, I would have liked to have seen that. Posted somewhere the public could actually see it. And I I would like to remind. You know, one of the, the most important pieces of this whole process we have for public meetings is just that. So the people can see it and they can have an opportunity to have their, their. Feelings heard or weighed or anything else, and if we. If we don't. Allow that or if we gloss it over that it's not quite as important because it wasn't on, you know, he. It was removed at seven and that's not as important as where it was. Well, I think we're doing a disservice to the resident of Village of Los Rancho's. That's my opinion only and it's not necessarily fact, but. I don't think that that serves the the public notice part of this whole. Procedure that we have in virtually every municipality in the United States has similar. Procedures just for that reason, so I, I, as. You know, I, I'm very disturbed by it and I'm I'm kind of. Quite frankly disturbed that it seems to be not that big of a deal to. Some people, I, it's a pretty big deal, I'm sure, to the people that live next to it if they. Weren't allowed the opportunity to weigh in on this. You know. Again, I'd say I put myself in in their shoes and how did the neighbors feel about that? Well, we can't even answer that if the neighbors never even had the ability to see that posting, so. That's what I have.
Director Justice, were were the neighboring. Property owners not notified of this by mail?
Commissioner C V, commissioners, yes. All the immediately adjacent neighbors, everyone within three hundred feet was identified. And sent a letter via mail, which reminds me, I apologize for this. I'm going to read out loud one of the comments that we received. That was received before publishing the meeting packet. I just failed to include that in the packet, so I apologize for that. This is from one of the neighbors, Bronson Duran. I'm writing to you this afternoon concerning the application for Roger and Georgia Eaton, who desire to use their home as an Airbnb destination rental. My wife and I are in support of Eaton's application. We know that they have used their home as such for the past three summers and for the balloon fiestas. And to our knowledge, there have been no issues or complaints of any kind from their neighbors. Theens require a minimum of three night stays, so to attract families wanting to take advantage of our very rural neighborhood with easy access to the Busky Trails. Maintain their property for this purpose and do not allow events on their property. The daughter is their local host. She lives close by in Corales and is on hand to assist. Please not hesitate to give me a call if you have any questions or concerns. Best regards, Bronson Duran. Apologize for the delay. Getting that, but you did all receive the comment over email before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Justice. Any further comments from the commission? Any further discussion? I absolutely see where Commissioner Gay is coming from and agree to an extent. I am, however, willing to accept Director Justice's explanation of the signage being on a private driveway as adequate. And seeing that the variance meets one of the hardship criteria, I I'm inclined to approve.
True, I agree with you and Dan regarding the signage. I think that's important. I'm kinda, gosh, I hate to say this on the fence about this regarding the the grace period. In that I understand, I know, sorry, it was really bad pun.
Good one, Karen.
No, I didn't mean it as soon as I said it. I guess my concern is, is, you know, they talked about in when he was making his. Sorry, request back in twenty twenty and and reached out to Tiffany and everything. And then they were gone for this. Grace period, but during the, from twenty twenty and and before to twenty twenty two. I mean, there, there were notices in the village. Voice, we had public meetings regarding short term rentals and things like that, that. I mean, there was information out there and that this was being discussed. And it wasn't just being discussed during that three month period that they were out of town, so. Not that they're pleading ignorance, I don't mean that, but there was enough information going around in the village voice posting of. On the website about what's on the agenda regarding short term rentals and that. The Board of Trustees and Planning were were trying to. Receive input, so this is where I'm just kinda on the fence that there had been information out there that this was. Was going on and that they could have tuned into this. Just that they were gone for the three months in May. It wasn't the only time that this was being discussed and and that's just my input.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to deny the application B B. Whatever the number is, B B.
Commissioner Gay, this one will be V twenty two dash oh one.
V twenty two dash oh one. Thanks Tiffany.
I second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Gay has moved to deny the application, the item, and. Commissioner Christiansen has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christiansen?
Um, so do I say, sorry, I get confused on this.
Commissioner Christiansen, it would be a yes, a yay to vote in favor of denying the application.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner C V, no. Commissioner Michelson?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Barrow?
No.
Okay, the, the motion fails with two in favor, four opposed. And at this point, Director Justice, seeing that it was denied, another motion would need to be made.
Yes, if we could get a, if we could get somebody to suggest another motion. Or even the same motion, expecting a different vote, I would appreciate it.
I move, sorry, I didn't put my hand up. I move that we approve. Per recommendations of Tiffany Justice.
And commissioners, if I could just get a motion to approve with the conditions. Or, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Barrow has moved to approve the motion with the conditions as listed. And Commissioner Michelson has seconded. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christiansen?
No.
Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner C V, yes. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrow?
Yes.
The motion carries, four in favor, two opposed. Let the record show that the public hearing, item four A, the request by Roger and Georgia Eaton for variance is formally closed. We'll now move on to item four B, bed and bed, bed and breakfast twenty two dash oh one. A request by Roger and Georgia Eaton for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by nine point two point two five E one. In the A one zone in the North Rio Grande character area. The property is located at eighty six seventeen Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest and is legally known as lot D one A of summary flat lots D one A and D one B. Los Monzanos subdivision, projected section seventeen, township eleven north, range three east, N M P M. Town of Alameda Grant, Village of Los Rancho's, Albuquerque, Burnaleo County, New Mexico. As filed in the office of the Burnaleo County Clerk on November thirteenth, twenty seventeen. The property contains one point four one six, one point four one six one acres more or less. Seeing that we just saw this, I will not ask if any commissioners will accuse themselves. Raise your hand if that's otherwise. Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Yes, commissioners, as indicated from the last application, applicants wish to operate a bed and breakfast at their residence. And bed and breakfasts are allowable in all zones as long as they have a bed and breakfast permit. And I wrote this report assuming that the commission approved the variance, but I included an option otherwise in case that the variance was denied. But seeing as that variance has been approved, the applicant. And all the documents in this packet are for and off premises operator, which is consistent with the variance. So there's a number of requirements for the applicants to meet and they meet all of them, including with the variance as previously approved. First is that a bed and breakfast is allowable use on this property as long as they have access to city water and sewer, and they do. The public notice requirements have been met. The operator is an employee of the property owners and both property and both. Parties live off premises and the variance allows for off premises operator. And there is one employee, which is the operator. Lodging is shown within the main dwelling on the property and space for outdoor activities is noted on the site plan. There are two guest rooms. On the site plan in the application, which is compliant with the four allowed. And there is a separate guest quarters, as noted, is not included in the rental. Off, street parking is required with two spaces for the property owner operator and one space per bedroom or rental unit. So two spaces are required and are met with the driveway and surrounding areas able to accommodate up to twenty one cars. Parking requirements for the operator are not applicable since they don't live on premises. Meals will not be served. There will not be a sign. Noise, the rules of operation are compliant with. Our subsections A through G. And the site plan and floor plan are compliant. And as mentioned before, there's one section of the rental, there's one section of the floor plan that is noted as not being part of the rental. The department does not recommend any additional conditions of approval since the applicant is in compliance and no prior bed and breakfast application has been submitted for this property in the last six months. The subsection E on nonconforming and being grandfathered in is not applicable since V twenty two dash oh one would supplement this. The master plan, this is, this application is supported in the economic development section of the master plan. And with us, the department recommends approval of V B twenty two dash oh one, a request for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by section nine point two point two five. E one in the A one zone in the North Rio Grande character area with the following conditions and findings. Conditions that the operation is subject to the requirements for bed and breakfast establishments listed under section nine point two point two five E one. Per section nine point two point two five E one B twelve, the operator must include the license number in their advertisements. Per section nine point two point two five E one B fourteen, the operator must post a license in the operation where it's visible. Per section nine point two point two five E one B seventeen, the bed and breakfast must be inspected annually by the fire department. With the findings that the application is in performance for section nine point two point two five E one and public notice requirements have been met. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from the commission at this point? All right, I'm hearing none. Is the applicant present again?
Yes, stand by.
Hello, Mr. Eaton. I'll have you state your full name and address for the record once again, but I do not think we need to swear you in again.
Roger Eaton. I'll skip my middle name, my address, eighty six seventeen Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, Los Rancho's.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Would you like to speak about your application?
And I think this was really a backup application in the event that we didn't get the variance for the first one. We have the ability to have an onsite operator because we have. A bedroom and a sitting room, which are separate and not part of the Airbnb. And I guess this is nice to have in the event that we stop doing the Airbnb and become. Like the sergeants and have a, a, a B, Airbnb. With guests, so is is that what I understand, Tiffany?
So, Mr. Eaton, commissioners, this bed and breakfast permit is for your operation as it currently exists.
Okay, that's fine.
And the variance was to, for your operation to have an off premises operator. But both applications would need to be approved in order to do what you're doing.
Okay. And respond to, Mr. Gay, I, I did have the, I didn't keep the. Sign on the front gate until seven. I took it off at, at about ten or eleven this morning. And I just took the back gate sign off. I apologize. I thought that it. Was terminated at the time that people had to make a public comment, so.
All right, are there any questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, I'm not hearing any questions. Kiko, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
There's nobody who has signed up, but if you'd like to speak in favor of the application, please use your raise your hand button.
Thank you, Kiko, and last.
Sorry, for the sake of consistency, I will. Bronson Duran indicated that his comment was for both applications, so I will read it out loud for this application as well, just for the sake of consistency in the record. So this is a comment in favor of the application from Bronson Duran. I'm writing to you this afternoon concerning the application for Roger. I'm writing to its afternoon concerning the application for Roger and Georgia Eaton, who desire to use their home as an Airbnb destination rental. My wife and I are in support of the Eaton's application, know that they have used their home as such for the past three summers. And for the Bloom Fiesta's and to our knowledge, there have been no issues or complaints of any kind from their neighbors. The Eaton's require a minimum of three night stay, so to attract families wanting to take advantage of a very rural neighborhood with easy access to the Los Guey Trails, to maintain their property for this purpose and do not allow events on their property. Their daughter is their local host. She lives close by and Corales is on hand to assist. Please don't hesitate to give me a call if you have any questions or concerns. Best regards, Bronson Duran.
Thank you, Director Justice. Kiko, my next question for you was, is there anybody present who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
There's nobody signed up to speak in opposition, but if you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand button.
Okay.
Let's raise their hand.
Thank you, Kiko. Are there any further comments from the Commission while the floor is open? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the floor for comments now. Is there any discussion on the application prior to the motion? Right, well, hearing none, I will state that because this complies with village code, I'm inclined to approve it. And with no further discussion, is there a motion?
Okay, I, I move to approve the application as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Barrow, would you be willing to state that the conditions would be included?
I thought they already were, but sure.
Sure.
Include the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrow. Commissioner Barrow has moved to approve the item, and Commissioner Smith has seconded. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Um. I, I, yes.
Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner Seavey, yes? Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrow?
Yes.
The motion carries, five in favor. Yes, let me count that, right, five in favor, one opposed. Let the record show that the public hearing, item four B, the request by Roger and Georgia Eaton for a bed and breakfast is formally closed. We'll now move on to item C, Site Development Plan twenty-one dash oh one. A request by Matthew Herrera for a preliminary review and recommendation to the Board of Trustees of a commercial site development plan for a development in the GD zone in the Fourth Street character area. The property is located at three twenty-two El Pueblo Road Northwest and is legally known as track one four one A one A one as shown on map number twenty-five in the middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, projected section sixteen, township eleven north, range three east, NMPM, Los Rancho de Albuquerque, Bernabeo County, New Mexico. The property contains zero point four eight acres more or less. Are there any Commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? Okay, hearing none. Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Uh, yes, so Commissioners, the proposed projects for a new light manufacturing shop, retail and office building on a vacant lot that currently have a contractor's yard on the south portion of the property, that contractor's yard would stay and a new building would be built. The sketch pot review was held in November of last year, and the applicant has amended their elevations per the suggestion from the Commission and is working on replodding the property to add an access easement for the south portion of the property. And this is currently in prog, in progress with a separate subdivision application that is administratively reviewed and processed. So with recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the final site development plan will go before the Board of Trustees. So there's a number of things that the applicant needs to demonstrate with their site development plan application. And first is just compliance with the Gateway District requirements. The proposed uses are permissive, the setbacks are met with a fifteen-foot setback on the south side. The building is compliant with our maximum height limitations, design requirements are met with a street-facing entrance and mask articulation. They basically just kind of break up the facade of the, of the building and the proposed materials and colors meet an architectural style for the site development plan. This plan is pretty compliant. The mail is noted to be delivered in store, but an optional mailbox location is shown. If the mail is currently delivered inside, an exterior mailbox is not necessary. No bike racks are shown on site and bike racks are not required. The grading and drainage plan has been reviewed by the village designated engineer, and they have noted any corrections that need to be made. The final corrected plan would need to be included in the site, in the final approval of the site development plan. For roadway standards, there's no proposed roads through the site, but access to the site will be through one ingress or egress on El Pueblo Road, and a traffic impact sentence not required. For the parking requirements in the parking lot design, the parking is located in the front of the building to better provide a residency vehicle access. Waste vehicle access is not needed as the property will use the dumpster next door and the loading docking areas are behind the building. This application also meets our parking requirements for the number of spaces as required, the dimensions, as well as providing ADA spaces and their proper dimensions. As mentioned before, a loading and docking area is shown on the south side of the building and is accessible through an existing access easement that is going to be able to be used with the new subdivision platelots also going through. For our specifications on unpaved lots, this isn't shown and will need to be shown in the final site development plan. Since the parking lot is noted as being gravel, trash receptacles, as noted earlier, there's going to be shared use on the neighboring property, and we will be requiring a shared use agreement for that. For landscaping, fifteen percent of the unbuilt area is required to be landscaped, and it is shown to be met in a note on the site plan. Site plan notes more information on the landscaping will be provided at the final submittal. And the landscape buffer between this property and the property to the south, which is zone residential, appears to meet the requirements for an alternative landscaping plan with landscaping and a solid wall or fence that's shown, and it's going to have to be six feet high. For the utilities, applicant is in the process of obtaining a statement confirming water and sewer availability. Utility plan notes water and sewer lines, and the fire one plan has been approved by the fire department. No new fire hydrants are required. For the lighting, building exterior lighting is shown around the building, which does exceed fifteen feet, which is our height limit. However, the lights are not freestanding and are used to eliminate signage and the building. So shielding will be used to limit the extent of the lights, and they appear to be shielded to comply with the dark skies ordinance, in which will also be confirmed with the building permits. All proposed and future exterior lighting on the site must comply with the dark skies ordinance. For signage, the building mounted signage is proposed, and that signage as well as any future signage will have to comply with our sign ordinance and require a separate sign permit. And the action required for this application, this is going to be a recommendation either to approve or deny, which would be factored in. This application would then go before the Board of Trustees for the final decision. And so with that, the Planning and Zoning Department recommends the Commission forward to the Board of Trustees a recommendation to approve the commercial site development plan for a development in the GD zone and the Forest Street character area with following conditions and findings. The final submittal includes a copy of the grant or warranty deed or other proof of ownership, exterior light specifications to conform, to confirm that the light, that the shielding will prevent rays emitted beyond forty-five degrees, i.e. angled downward and not to the side, or confirmation that lights will be included on the building plans and verified for dark skies compliance during building permits submittal. We'll need a copy of the shared use agreement for the dumpster between three fourteen and three twenty-two El Pueblo to be filed at the Bernabeo County Clerk's Office prior to issuance of a building permit. The landscape plan needs to meet the requirements of our section on landscaping, including plant types and irrigation. The water and sewer availability letter must be included in the final submittal, otherwise will be required to be submitted prior to issuance of the building permit. And we will need a note on the site plan for nuisance management or abatement, such as for noise or light as required by the specific requirements of the Gateway District Zone for site development plans. The grading and drainage plan must be corrected per the engineer's review for approval, and will need to show compliance with our gravel private waste specifications. Light manufacturing uses must obtain the required village county and or state licenses or permits for their uses and abide by the requirements for health and safety. Any future signage must comply with sign ordinance and sign permits must be obtained. Exterior lighting must comply with the dark skies ordinance. The final site development plan must meet Bernabeo County Fire Department requirements. Construction shall meet all current village county and state codes. All developments shall meet required federal, state, and local EPA NPDES requirements. Now, this is for stormwater. All development shall meet requirements of the air quality program administered by the City of Albuquerque. The site shall provide for noise abatement, and the final site development plan must be executed by the applicant. With the findings that this application is in performance with the master plan and the overall village goals, village form, and economic development sections, proposed development meets the requirements of the Gateway District Zone and public notice requirements have been met. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Any questions for the Director? Director Justice, I do have one question. I am looking at the, the site plan on page one fifteen. And the parking lot is shown as gravel parking, but there is a paved accessible space. From the access aisle adjacent to the accessible space, there is in a wheelchair, you would, you would be forced to navigate through gravel to get to the entrance, so this is not meeting ADA in my opinion. Um, that's just one thing that stood out to me, that, that's an issue. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Commissioner Seavey, Commissioners, it's an excellent point. We can ask the applicant, well, when they speak, whether or not the pavement will extend to the edge of the building, promenade facade area. And if not, just have that noted as corrected on the plans prior to final submittal.
Thank you, Director Justice, and there may be, and I would need to verify this, but on the New Mexico Accessible Parking checklist, they typically show a sidewalk at the end of that access aisle. It's really less than ideal to, to force accessible users to, to navigate through the actual paved parking area. I don't know if that holds water in terms of our ordinance and how we could enforce that, but it's just, it's not a friendly design in my opinion. The other issue is we have a, a parking space, the very southwest parking space. That's going to be very hard to back up and turn out. You'll typically see like a five-foot keyway where you can back into and then get out, so. Yeah, just the layout of the site plan is a little bit unfriendly in my opinion. We can ask the owner about that. Any further comments from the Commission? All right, is the applicant present?
Standby.
Yes, I am present.
All right, good evening. Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Matthew Herrera, three one four El Pueblo Northwest, eight seven one one four Los Rancho's, New Mexico.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in, Mr. Herrera?
Mr. Herrera, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Herrera, would you like to speak about your application?
Uh, yes, um, I, I think Tiffany said everything very well, and we are, we do intend to be in compliance with everything that she mentioned, as well as updating the plans as necessary. To your comments, sir, about the ADA accessibility from that space into the building, we will make sure that the plan references the ability to not have to go through any gravel to get into the building. And in reference to the five-foot backout, I've had a conversation with our civil engineer, and he was not able to find any code that required that particular five-foot backout. So we were inclined to maximize the use of that parking space and parking lot to not do that. You know, maybe we'll end up doing something by calling that compact or something, but due to the fact that there is at least twenty-four foot of a backup space there, they should be able to get out, but I, I do agree it's less convenient, but we're not aware of any code that requires it.
Makes sense to me, thank you. Do you have more to add on your application?
Um, no, I think the report and findings are very good, and we've had a, had a good experience going through the process, and everything has been really clear to us, so we do intend to comply and move everything forward.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions at, at this time from the Commission for the applicant? All right, we're not hearing any questions. Is there anybody present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
There is nobody present in the meeting.
Thank you, Kiko. And the other side of that, anybody present or to speak in opposition to the application?
Again, there is nobody else in the meeting.
Thank you, Kiko. Any further comments from the Commission at this point for the applicant? Okay, I'm hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and now close the floor for comments. And do we have any discussion amongst the Commission prior to a motion? Well, I'll add one comment. I would like to add a condition. You know, the, we, we saw this back in November. I think the plan absolutely does have merit, just looking at that. One site plan, there, there is a, a real accessibility issue, so just stating that the applicant must follow ADA is a that, that, that's what I would add to my list of conditions. Any further comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the site plan to, I don't know the language, but to approve that we forward it to the Board of Trustees for their review. Got it?
Yes, Commissioners, if I could just rephrase it, just to say that you are recommending that the Commission forward to the Board of Trustees recommendation to approve the application. Is that recommendation including the additional condition that Commissioner Seavey mentioned about ADA accessibility?
Uh, no, it is not. It just stands as you had presented it.
Commissioner Michelson, did I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, at this point, there can be discussion on the motion prior to a roll call vote without modifying the, the language to, or the the conditions to include or to cause the applicant to follow ADA, I will not be voting approval on this.
Well, Drew, I think, oh, that, that any plan submitted has to follow ADA. So it seems kind of redundant to add something on there that was already gonna happen anyway.
It doesn't seem explicit in what was presented tonight, and so I just wanted to guarantee that, you know, they can, cannot get away with putting an accessible spot through which you'd have to navigate through gravel to get to the front entrance of the structure. Director Justice, maybe you could help clarify, is that something that will just be required by default for, for this to move forward?
Commissioner Seavey, Commissioner Gay, Commissioners, yes, it's required by default. However, you probably have seen even just in our last application, I often include conditions that are already included by default. And so even if it is redundant, it can serve as a helpful reminder for the applicant that they need to do this. So either way, whether it's included or not, they will need to abide by ADA.
Thank you, Director Justice. I think that satisfies my concern, actually. Appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Director Justice. I think that satisfies my concern, actually. Appreciate that clarification. Any further discussion before we move on to a roll call vote? Okay, we'll move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey, yes. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Barrow?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that the public hearing item four C, the request by Matthew Herrera for a preliminary review and recommendation to the Board of Trustees of a commercial site development plan is formally closed. We'll now move on to item five, old business. There is no old business. Item six, new business. There is no new business. Item seven, reports. Director Justice, may we have the Planning Department report?
Yes, so Commissioners, the department was closed for the holidays, so our staff are mostly catching up on various inquiries and processing applications. Jennifer Shilly continues to work on building permits, parcel permits, the magazine, as well as business renewals. As at this point, any business renewing is going to incur a ten dollar late fee. Thomas Sanchez is patrolling the village and is working with property, which bring the properties and compliance. Helen Gonal is our new intern and she's getting up to speed on the Planning and Zoning Department's inner workings. She's reviewing the master plan, our code, and is starting to review different types of applications. I am continuing to work on revising various application forms to clarify the information that's required and the documents that's required, as well as including a provision on our applications that says that incomplete applications without all required supplemental documents will not be processed. And I am planning to work within the next month with our legal to come up with options for the deferral limit discussion. That way we can, we can have some options to discuss prior to just discussing on the overall topic without any guidance. This way, we know kind of what other communities have been doing, what other states are doing, you know, just if there's any guidance at all prior to deciding where to go. And also included in your packet is a year end summary report. This year end summary report was also this is the second year that we've done this, and I believe last year it went before the Board of Trustees. I don't recall if it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we just wanted to have you all be able to see this as well, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Any any questions from the Commission?
Yeah, Tiffany, I have one. I've noticed if you open up the online portal for the Village Code and if you don't go to the specific tab that that, I can't remember what it was called, but it's the tab that says if you want to go to, I think it's a PDF or something, but in the in the in the software that opens up with the code, there's a few references for Monticello, Utah, the village of or city of Monticello, Utah. So I think, and I know we stay in there that you know, you want to go over to this other tab, but I think it could be confusing. Some people might someday find that one passage that, you know, that puts the village in some kind of a legal dispute. So I would like to just suggest you you, you know, just do spot reviews of the of that software that we bought, just to make sure that we are not confusing the public who opens this up and reads it. And if I find another section, if I find the sections that I've seen already, it never occurred to me to write them down until I was reviewing the code on or our ordinance on public on the signage that we just went through earlier. But since I know that now, if I find something, I will send you a note of where I found it and what it is. But I think it would be our best interest to make sure that there's no cross referencing there, that it's not, you know, our village, so. That's it.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, we're gonna transition now to item eight, Commissioners, informal discussion. Are there any reports or information that any of the Commissioners would like to share? All right, well, hearing none, we'll move on to item nine, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, Commissioner Gay has moved to adjourn. Commissioner Christensen has seconded the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. The meeting for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two is adjourned at eight oh nine PM. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.